Harley, we're back in session. That report, FRCW 2016 regarding the updated development charges rates for effective January the first be received for information, put that on the floor. Counselor Mackey, Counselor Fosbrook. Kevin?
This is the annual indexing of the development charges. This county's bylaw reads it every year that the charges should be indexed, shall be indexed. And it's based on a third quarter, year-over-year increase. So this year, that non-residential building construction price index is 5.2 percent. So that will mean an increase of $352 to that singles and semis build. And I think that's when you see all the tenders for road construction stuff and how they've been so high, I think that reflects why that index is the highest I've seen in my time here. But so I brought it here for information so that when we, it could have just been, I really didn't even need to bring this here because the bylaw reads it shall, but I wanted to use for information that you hear ratepayers or builders complaining that you were aware of what was changing too. So we'll send out new brochures to all the local municipalities, so that'll be there. And yeah, any comments, but that's how our bylaws read that it should be indexed.
Thanks for that, Kevin. So it's formulaic then, really?
Yeah.
And it points to the index at a certain date, does it?
Yeah, and it's based on the end of September, the third quarter, year-over-year. And again, if you don't do this, then you're falling farther behind in those costs and are going to get born by the next, either your other ratepayers that aren't building or living here, or the next bunch of developers, you're going to drive your reserves into a negative larger amounts and they'll end up paying the next time the future development builds. So, okay.
So the first dollar I earned isn't not worth much anymore. Okay. We got that on the floor? Yes. All in favor of this vote?
Any questions?
Oh, questions. It could be no questions, but anyhow, go ahead. Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Kevin, has there ever been any thought towards putting a freeze on the semis and the townhouses? You know, we keep hearing about the, well, not just hearing, but we know there's a dilemma there for affordable housing. Is there any mechanism to help that sector?
I think it's all based on a ratio, so I'd have to go back to the consultant on that question, to be honest. I don't know if you could, because literally you'd be putting more onto different development. And I don't think we can calculate it that way, but I'd have to check on that. So I can investigate that, but I'm, not that I'm aware.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Counselor Echols?
But not so much about the attainable part, but there certainly is for when we get into the affordable thing. There is a way of addressing that towards those semis or affordable housing, right? It's up to the next council, whatever ones you want to subsidize, go ahead, but slippery slope.
Well, the last affordable housing thing we did, we clawed back the DC charges and...
Yeah, we've done the grant and lieu, if that's what you're referencing, yes, which keeps the reserve, DC reserve whole. And then you don't have other developers complaining that they're picking that up the next time because you've created a bigger deficit in your reserve because of that. Yeah.
Excellent. Okay. See any other questions? We'll call the vote. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Next is section E. I'm three, I'm four. I got it. There we are. Patrick Coy is up next. That report, TRCW 4418 be received and that schedules H-N-0, oh, sorry, P and U of bylaw 4788-13 be the bylaw to regulate traffic and parking on Gray County roads be amended to reflect the proposed revisions. I'll put that on the floor. Counselor Fosbrook, second or Counselor Bell? Go ahead, Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I want to thank Matt and Mark for all his work on this report and the clerks as well. Going through these bylaws isn't a lot of fun. They're kind of finicky and you want to make sure you're right. And just when you think you've reviewed it, you might have to review it again. So I'm going to go through kind of what this bylaw entails. So this bylaw actually has schedules A to V, so there's all sorts of different areas that it addresses, parking and community safety zones and speed limits and anything to do with traffic on our road. So a lot of it we update based on requests from the public, which there are a lot of requests from the public. Also, our staff, we're always mentioning to our staff, keep an eye on the bylaws, keep an eye on the signs, make sure everything is legal. If there's going to be tickets, everything has to be covered. So, and it's our chance to maybe improve traffic operations from our guys as well. So I'm just going to go through, Matt's got a good executive summary here on page 77. I'm just going to start at the bottom of page 78 and go through some of the things that are going to be changed, proposed to be changed. So one is Maxwell. We've had a few calls, we had, I'll get into this as well. There was a request for a four-way stop in Maxwell. And also, our guys have kind of made note that they're coming in Gray Road Two into Maxwell, the visibility pulling out into Gray Road Four isn't the greatest. And I think that's why residents were looking maybe for a four-way stop, some of them, and to slow people down. And then our guys had also mentioned that winter maintenance is difficult, there's a lot of parking in Maxwell. Maxwell is quite a busy little hamlet. So we actually sent out a letter to the residents and said, "We're thinking about making it no parking and to improve the visibility and the winter maintenance." So actually, the residents, very good to contact us back. They kind of requested, "Well, maybe you could just do no winter parking overnight and only do no parking within 30 meters of Gray Road Two." We thought that was a good idea, it's a good compromise. It helps us with our winter maintenance and it helps with visibility. People in Gray Road Two, now that we're, you know, aware of the problem. So that's what we're recommending at the bottom of page 78 is, so no parking within 30 meters of the intersection and no parking overnight. So people didn't seem opposed to that. So, you know, when they pull up to the restaurant during the day, they can park there. So the business owners seemed satisfied with that, too. The next section, Schedule K, is about the four-way stop. So we get a lot of requests for four-way stop and typically, it's always to just slow people down. That really isn't the purpose of a four-way stop. It says they shouldn't, the traffic manual says they shouldn't really be used just for that. The other thing that we just noticed is if you, so we had one in Maxwell, a request in Maxwell and also a request in Ben Allen. That being said, if you make it a four-way stop, then people are probably going to complain about the trucks stopping and the noise. So they might not think of that when they're requesting a four-way stop, but we didn't feel in either one of those situations it was warranted. We don't include every request we deny in here, but we thought those ones were important because they're just specifically with four-way stop, we thought it's worth mentioning. So next is the Schedule N, rates of speed at the bottom of page 79. We're getting a lot of requests generally on our busy roads, are getting busier. People that are new to the area are surprised how fast cars are going. You know, it's posted 80, people are averaging 90, say. We get a lot of suggestions to lower it to 60 or 70. Our issue is with our current policy, we would have a lot of 70 zones and 60 zones and we feel if we just keep treating them as a one-off, it kind of compromises what the county road system is about. All of a sudden, you've got these 70s everywhere because someone bought a house and likes to go for a walk, and I know that's important, too, but it goes back to a sign not necessarily slowing people down anyway. So we're going to look in 2019 at our speed limit policy and try to come up with a policy that is based more on what people are comfortable going and what the appropriate speed would be rather than just changing it instantly to a 70. So that's something, we didn't really address lowering the speed limits in here with a few exceptions. Gray Road Two, we're just extending the 50, it's kind of in a, it's rated at somebody's house, it's not a big deal to extend it by, you know, a few hundred meters. Slowing down in Cedarville because there's a Mennonite school there, we extended the 50 there as well. And then the other one is Gray Road 32 where we had lowered it to a 60 and we receive a lot of complaints that 60 is too low, we repaved the roads a little wider. People feel 60 is abnormally slow to be driving, so we're bumping that back up to a 70. Schedule O on page 81, the rates of speed in school zones, we changed that at the Mennonite school in Cedarville as well. It was kind of, you know, sometimes those Mennonite schools kind of fall off the radar, you don't really hear a lot about them until you see the kids out walking and, you know, they're not calling us probably frequently, right? So the next one, Schedule P, we are recommending a lot of changes. So this is in our hamlets, there's always a lot of complaints from the hamlets on people, because it's hard, you're driving, you're going 80 and you're going into an area that's kind of built up, trying to get through the hamlet to the next area. So we thought that community safety zones are kind of a happy compromise, to slow people down, a little more awareness, a little more enforcement hammer for our police forces. So you'll see there's six hamlets there that we're recommending community safety zones. On the Schedule U on page 82, no parking. One in East Linton, there's just a lot of trucks pulling out of East Linton Side Road that can't really see, or cars that can't really see, there's a house close. We just thought the car could park somewhere else. So, and the other one, as I said, was earlier in Maxwell. So just getting cars away from that intersection of Gray Road Four and Two. So that's kind of the summary of the changes. The signs themselves, of course, aren't very expensive, it's about $6,000. There's photos on the following pages, page 84 to 90, which are all the kind of details on where the signs are going to go. And as far as consultation, we sent this to the member municipalities. We also sent it to the police services. We haven't really heard anything back from them yet. We haven't heard really good or bad, but we just thought we'd give everyone the heads up. So we did quite a bit of public consultation on this compared to what we did, you know, a bunch of years ago. And I think it's going to help us in the future just to make sure everyone's kind of on board and see issues before they occur.
Thanks, Pat. That was, there'd be a lot of happy people, actually, when this happens. Yes, Counselor Ardell?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. A question to Pat then. Forty and Two seems to constantly have accidents there. So during harvest, apple harvest, there was another horrific accident there involving some offshore workers. And it wasn't, didn't work out very well. And just wondering, it looks like you've got a bigger stop sign there now and a bigger flashing light, but people are still going through it. They just don't seem to see this massive stop sign and flashing light. And I don't know what else we can do there without putting traffic lights up because there's been several fatalities, oh, can't even talk, fatalities there. And, you know, it's just getting worse because people are just coming down 40 and not realizing this massive stop sign and they fly through and then who's ever coming across too gets T-boned. So just, is there anything else the town should be doing or, you know, besides putting traffic lights there?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, we have had a lot of accidents there. Like I said, we can't quite figure out why. There's a flasher there, there's an oversized stop sign there. I don't know, there's a couple around like that that we kind of keep taking steps over and over again and eventually you just kind of, you know, when you read the traffic manual it says, you know, putting up a four-way stop that really shouldn't be there is not recommended. Short of going to, you know, eventually a fully controlled intersection or a four-way stop, there's not much we can do. I don't know what accident that would cause moving forward, all of a sudden you've got this weird four-way stop. People on Two don't feel like they should be stopping, obviously. Unfortunately, people on Forty don't either sometimes, right? So we've looked at that one and we just can't kind of understand exactly why that keeps going on.
So at the Town Line and Forty, there's a flashing amber light there. People tend to slow down there. There's no, there is a stop sign for the Town Line. You know, we don't have accidents there, but I'm just wondering, maybe having a hanging flashing light as well from Hugo's Bus Line, you know, across the road and so that, you know, it is a warning because, you know, these offshore labors just got, you know, cleaned and it was not nice, so.
That intersection is one where if you come up to it from beside the bus company...
Yep.
Your eye is drawn because it's a long, long, straight road.
Yep.
And you're looking way at the horizon there. And I can see how if you weren't from there that you didn't know to stop, that you could be looking way down the road and just not pay attention.
Attention, yeah.
It just doesn't enter into your, I don't know if that's what happened, but I can see just looking at the map.
Is there a criteria for the suggestion of a flashing light there?
We don't have any criteria for that right now. We could look, we should look into that one and we'll...
So the same as you have on the Town Line in Forty, it's overhanging, I see it from my bedroom every night.
The one thing about the...
You have a red one, a red one?
No, it's not a red one, it should be, probably.
Through you, Mr. Warden. One thing about the Town Line one is the visibility there is not maybe as far as you would think it is. So I think people are just kind of subconsciously slowing down because you can't, you know, whereas as Kim said, maybe when you see farther, you don't really...
Well, we do have the slower coming, because when, especially now that it's snow, we usually see a couple of cars in the orchard, you know, wake up in the morning and they're in there. But so, because it is a steep hill and you come down and it's icy, you're out of control. So you do have to slow it down. Maybe we should be slowing it down coming through there. I know people are not going to like me for that, but I'm thinking, what's this word? But, you know, it might slow them down because there's been so many accidents, it's just continually happening and they're just getting worse.
Well, Pat's made a note of that and Counselor Echols, of course, has?
Well, I guess that, you know, it's the same, you've said the other one and I think the biggest one down in southern Gray County is Four and Three. Big stop signs, red flashing light on top of the stop sign.
Yep.
Just drive through it. You know, we've had our police look at it, we've, you know, counties looked at it. We've had studies. People are stupid. That, I don't know how to be more blunt and frank, but that, some drivers are just stupid and they don't look, they don't do. So I guess investing in, and the one that I'm thinking about is on the county line, out in the middle of two farmers' hayfields, we've got stoplights. Yet you hear the complaints there. People, because it's out in the middle of nowhere, don't respect the spotlight, they look and, yeah, nobody's coming, and go on through. I don't think it's, we can put anything in other than education that if you're going to be stupid, you're either going to get killed or you're going to kill somebody.
Well, that's what's happening.
And that, I don't know how we can protect people from their stupidity.
Thanks for...
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Pat, one quick question. At one time, we used to reuse the cuts in the road like I know at Hopeville, the rumble strips. Has that been eliminated as a, as in a policy decision?
It was eliminated maybe 12, maybe, 2012, 13, maybe?
Okay. Because then I remember, I mean, there aren't people around, but I remember driving into Hopeville many nights and appreciating the fact that there was rumble strips there. So I don't know whether you want to have a revisit on that, but they are effective at some point. Okay, any other? Yes, Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So it seems, and I'm just going to make sure that I'm interpreting this correctly, so a member of the public requested that the Mennonite school area in Cedarville be addressed. And then the community safety zone says public and member municipalities have requested. So in order to achieve community safety zone status, does that require any consensus from the lower tier or is that strictly a Gray County decision if it's on Gray County roads?
I know we talked to the lower tiers, but it doesn't require their permission.
Okay. And so getting back to the Mennonite school area, I think it's great that this is being addressed. It was certainly brought up at the lower tier. 60 kilometers an hour in really what is a school zone, right? Is that standard school zone speed?
Well, it won't be during school hours, like it will be the, let me see here. It's going to be 40 during school hours.
Okay.
It's a drop, so it's down on 80k road, rural highway, basically. It's a 60k is the, the urban center.
Okay, so thank you for that because it is not going to be lower than 60, right?
Correct.
Okay. And because of the rural setting? Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? So city, all the motion, all in favor? Thank you. Carried. Okay, next one up is Rockland Manufacturing Minor Exemption. That report, PRCW 4018 be received and that the amended applicant, am I...
You did the first one.
Oh, sorry, my tick mark was overarching there. Sorry, I'm going to go back to F, sorry. That report, PRCW 3918 be received and the application for a minor exemption under the county forest management bylaw for lot 37 concession 8427066, eighth concession in the geographic township of Artemisia and municipality of Gray Highlands be approved. Hi, Stephanie.
Hi.
Hoover and Second, or Counselor Greenfield, Counselor Patterson? Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. So before you is a minor exemption application for property owner Owen Martin in Gray Highlands. The minor exemption application is to cut .25 hectares of land. There are two pockets of land that are currently forested. As you can note, it's a triangle and circle areas that are highlighted in red. They are adjacent to existing farmlands and so the property owner is looking to cut these trees to extend their existing farming operation, to extend the cash crop on their property. The subject property is 30 hectares in size and the proposed clearing, as I mentioned, is to convert the subject lands to farming. As per the Gray County's forestry bylaw, we circulated to agencies and members of the public, no comments were received from public, members of the public. The Gray Sable Conservation Authority noted the applicant would not require a permit from their office as a proposed tree removal was outside of the provincially significant wetland. There are no concerns for the municipality of Gray Highlands nor the Gray County's Forest bylaw enforcement officer and county staff are recommending approval of this minor exemption application. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions of Stephanie? Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you. What, if any, would be the implications of natural heritage and all that review that we did and now we're like, sure, just have at the trees? So we're, yeah, that's my question. Is there any correlation there?
So in this application, there are, the Gray County's Forestry bylaw officer did a site visit on this property and there's quite a bit of significant wetlands in that property and provincially other identified wetlands. And so through review of this application, the, actually, the Gray County Forestry bylaw officer was quite shocked that the applicant was going to go forward with this type of application because it's quite swampy where they're proposing to cut the trees. But there was a review through Gray Sable and it's outside of the regulated area, so they don't have to go through a permit to have these trees removed to extend their farmlands.
So if I may, Conservation Authority is not in the regulated area, so then it falls to the county to say, "We're okay with this."
Yep.
And so where do we get our information to understand what the implications may or may not be of this decision?
So through circulation to agencies. So we circulate these applications to the Gray County Forestry bylaw officer as well as the planning team at Gray Sable Conservation, members of the public and typically as well the county, or sorry, the forestry manager of Gray Sable will also have a review of these applications. So we rely on their expertise for these applications.
Okay, so I guess what I'm not clear on is if the Conservation Authority says it's not in the regulated area, are they giving you any opinion at all? My concern is that as soon as they say, "Not my department," that we don't have anybody giving consideration with the appropriate expertise to say, "Yes, no problem, don't see any implications for the future." That's my concern.
Thanks.
I can, with the Conservation Authority, we rely on them for part of their natural heritage review. So even inside of the regulation review, we ask them to also look at it from a natural heritage perspective. So in this case, they felt that these two pieces of lands that are proposed to be clearcut don't have the significant value, I guess, in terms from a natural heritage perspective, so they can be considered to be cleared. So that's, that's typically part of the review is to also look at it from those aspects.
Counselor?
Thank you, Stephanie. I'm curious, there's a bit of an irony here, in my opinion, because usually somebody's looking for a way to get around some of this and it just turns out that the line isn't where we thought it was. So that's allowing this person to drain that, tile drain. So, but best management practices probably still wouldn't favor this. It's just that the boundaries don't just really fall where we thought they did. Is that a fair assumption?
I guess we don't look at it from the aspects of the tile drains, we're only looking at it from the aspects of the forest itself.
Yes.
And whether or not it is consistent with the forest management bylaw. In this case, because they're proposing to clear more lands and trees than what our bylaw permits, it requires this minor exemption because they're clearcutting those pieces. So, but we don't look at it from the aspect of, you know, eventually are they going to have to tile drain these lands? Possibly. But that's a separate aspect that we're going to look at at that point in time.
No, I realize it is separate and it doesn't involve us in deciding that, but definitely because it's swampy, that's the end goal. So in my opinion, best management practices would be to not do it. But anyway, that's the decision.
Okay, thanks for those. Any other comments? Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. So just to follow up on what Bob said, I'm finding it hard to understand one of our staff go out and it's in a swampy area, why wouldn't the Conservation Authority then go and visually look at it? Because that's not the type of area they typically want to, you know, let anything happen in. You certainly couldn't build a house there.
I think they did, at least, right?
They did a site visit.
But it's swampy.
Yeah, and as I mentioned, too, the Gray County Forestry bylaw officer did mention that the lands are quite wet and so the extension of his farmland in this case might be challenging. But that's what the applicant had mentioned as part of his intent of the overall application was to extend his crop lands.
Okay. There you are. Okay. Yes, Counselor Barfield?
I just don't want to belabor this, but I mean, normally it's the other way around. You've got high land and the Conservation of the Authority are saying that it's, that it still needs to be regulated, so for them to make this comment is out of the ordinary that if it's swampy land and they don't want to have it within the regulated area to make the comment is a bit unusual.
Got the trees down, the swamp will go away. Anything else? I don't see any other comments, questions? That's all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thanks, Stephanie. Are you up for the next one? Yes, okay. Next one is that report, PRCW 4018 be received and that the amended application, map two, for a minor exemption under the county forest management bylaw for lot 31 concession 5213159, 30th Side Road in the geographic township of Artemisia, municipality of Gray Highlands be approved. Put that on the floor. Counselor Burley, Counselor Hicks, discussion. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. So again, another minor exemption application, this is for property owner John M. Martin in Gray Highlands. So the initial minor exemption application in this case was to clearcut 13 hectares of evergreens and to convert the lands back to farmlands. Following initial circulation and comments received, the proposal was amended and the amended proposal, I'll show you two maps of the initial and the amended. The amended is now to cut .8 hectares of trees. So this was the initial proposed tree clearing of the initial submission from the applicant. As you can note as well, the satellite imagery is a bit out to date, it's about four or five years out to date, so it doesn't display that the lands on these properties are in fact completely covered in trees. The red square is where the amended proposal, so that would be a .8 hectares of land. So that, this is what we're discussing today. So as per the county's forestry... So as per the county's forestry bylaw, management bylaw, the application was circulated to agencies and the public. No comments were received from the public. With respect to this one, Gray Sable Conservation Authority indicated that trees were planted on the subject property in two thousand and nine and two thousand and eleven under the fifty million tree program through Trees Ontario, which is now known as Forests Ontario. Just to give you guys a bit of a background on that program, the Forests Ontario government ministry has indicated that they'd like to plant fifty million trees by the year 2025. As part of that program as well, if you're a successful applicant and you have a property that they deem appropriate for this type of tree planting, they will subsidize up to ninety percent of the tree planting on your property. As well part of this application, you have to sign a fifteen-year management agreement in practice, to practice good forestry management. So following this, Gray Sable staff also completed a forest, a managed forest plan for the subject property in two thousand and nine, which stipulates good forest practices. And the contract, however, was not binding to subsequent owners of the property. So the previous owner of this property sold the existing property within the last year. And as far as we are aware, the agreement that they had in place has not expanded to the fifteen years that was initially stipulated as the existing owner that went through this program. So Gray County's Forestry Bylaw Officer would not support the initial application as proposed. The officer alongside the county planner conducted a site visit and these trees are in good condition and healthy and well-established. The amended proposal was brought forward to staff and county forestry bylaw enforcement officer indicated support for this proposal. There are no concerns expressed from the municipality of Gray Highlands. At this time, county planning staff are recommending approval of the amended minor exemption application, which would be to clearcut point eight hectares on the subject property. Be happy to take any questions at this time.
Any questions? Yes, Counselor Greenfield.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Stephanie. So the area that's proposed to be cut was planted by Greysaw as part of the fifty million tree. I have to admit, I had a little bit of a question about wisdom with the last recommendation, but this to me seems to be very counterproductive. I mean, I can see Greysaw going for this because at one time, obviously a year or two ago, Greysaw Conservation had planted more trees and then the Conservation Authority and all of the territory. And I'm just a little bit worried that we're starting to get into a bit of a [inaudible]. So I really have trouble supporting this. I mean, I can think of a spot open arm in the town that never should have planted other trees. First of all, this is six or seven years ago and it is beautiful fertile land. Anyway, that's beside the point. I can see somebody coming over there and saying, geez, we've been growing real big trees and I don't think those trees are... If we start this, Greysaw will... And that is completely going to undo all the efforts that Greysaw was going through for the last couple of decades. That would be unfortunate.
Okay, that's good comments. Counselor Mackey?
So Stephanie, from a planning perspective, where does agricultural land and forested land, has one got the upper hand on the other? Is there a hierarchy between the two?
Not that... There's nothing in our written policy that states either. We have strong protective policies for agricultural lands, but in this case, we also have strong protective policies for woodlands. And so these lands, the proposed, the amended proposal is under one hectares, which means that it's not recognized as a woodlot, whereas our strong protective policies in our official plan speak to the woodlots and woodlands.
I think Harley brings up some, you know, valid points that we need to consider going forward because there may be more. As farmland becomes more valuable, there has been over the last twenty years lots of properties that were purchased when farmland wasn't expensive and planted in trees, which people may wanna revert back to farmland. So I think things like this will happen more and more.
And certainly Gray Sable Conservation, the Gray County's Forestry Bylaw Officer was very challenged with this application and that's where we're looking to also carry out a campaign that advises potential property owners as well as existing property owners about the ability to cut trees on their property because sometimes in instances where people are buying property, they aren't aware of what regulations are in place and so they aren't familiar with what they're able to do. And so, you know, in certain instances, this person may have bought the property with the intent of farming but may have not been familiar with what the tree cutting bylaw permissions outlined.
Okay, caution moving forward. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, call the motion, all in favor? That motion is carried. Thank you, Stephanie. Are you up for more shows?
Yeah.
That report P D R C W forty-one eighteen regarding a proposed county official plan amendment be received and that the proposal proceeds to a public meeting to consider amendment to the county of Gray official plan on lands designated agriculture and hazard lands to permit a surplus farm dwelling severance within five hundred meters of the primary settlement area boundary of the town of Hanover for lands described as lot five, six, and seven concession S D R thirty-eight eleven thirty-eight Napville Road, geographic township of Bentick, municipality of West Gray, provided the municipality is prepared to hold a joint public meeting in consideration of the necessary local amendment requirement. Put that on the floor. Counselor Bell, Secunder, Counselor Boddy. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. As mentioned, this is a proposed county official plan amendment and it's the merit report. The subject property is located three hundred and eighty-five meters from the primary settlement area of Hanover. The lands are designated agricultural and hazard lands as noted on the air photo there. The proposed severance is simply to encompass, is only to simply encompass the existing residential as well as barns on the subject property. Within the county official plan, there isn't, there aren't permissions for this type of surplus farm dwelling severance as it's within five hundred meters of the primary settlement area boundary, although there is consideration for this type of application at the provincial level. An amendment is needed to the county official plan, policy two point one point three six, and a zoning bylaw amendment and consent application to the municipality of West Gray. The subject lands are approximately forty-six point eight hectares in size. The severed, proposed severance will be one point two hectares in size. There are no natural ecological or natural heritage features situated within one hundred twenty meters of the proposed severed parcel. As well, a sign has been posted on the subject property noting when the public meeting will be as well as what the proposed development is looking to take place. And as well, there has been no detailed analysis or recommendation at this point and county staff will provide a recommendation following the public process and agency circulation. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions of Stephanie at this time? Yes, Counselor Bell.
Just real quick, thanks, Stephanie, for the report. I've been on this farm. How, do you know exactly how far it is? Because although it says within five hundred meters, I know it's a significant distance across the river, I think, before you're gonna run into the boundary of Hanover. So just wondering, do you know exactly how many meters it is?
Yeah, it's roughly three hundred and eighty-five meters.
I'm sorry?
Three hundred and eighty-five is a reference. Yeah.
Okay, answered that question. Any other questions? Seeing none, call the motion, all in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much, Stephanie, for those presentations. Okay. Done, I. We're now moving into J. And that's a report P R C W forty-three eighteen be received for which provides an overview of the current contract agreements with Gray Sable Conservation Authority for managing the Gray County forests, general maintenance and risk management of county-owned trails and for providing bylaw enforcement of the county's forest management bylaw and that based on the current contract agreements expiring December the thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, and March the first, two thousand and nineteen respectively, it is recommended that the agreements be extended to December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen to allow the opportunity to update the agreements in two thousand and nineteen for the council to consider the renewal of the contract agreements, arrangements, sorry, outside of the lame duck period. And the council acknowledges that an extension of the current agreements with Gray Sable Conservation Authority December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen is required and staff be directed to move forward with these renewals as approved by the chief administrative officer in accordance with sections one, two of law five oh two nine dash eighteen being the lame duck bylaw and that the Gray Sable Conservation Authority agreement continue as per four point three F of the purchasing policy stating that a single source procurement may take place when competitive procurement may be found to be impractical. Put that on the floor. Pringle, Secunder. Counselor Patterson. Thank you. Go ahead, Randy.
Thank you, Warden Holiday. So the purpose of this report is to support staff extending the current contract agreement with Gray Sable Conservation Authority to the end of December two thousand and nineteen, primarily for budget planning purposes for both the county and the Conservation Authority because we're now planning our budgets for two thousand and nineteen, and also allow further time to update these agreements and bring back to council outside of the lame duck period. Back in two thousand and five, the county entered into a contract agreement with Gray Sable to manage the county forests and the trails within those county forests as well as to enforce the county's forest management bylaw. In two thousand and seven, Gray Sable also took on the management of the CP rail trail, including risk management and general maintenance of that trail. The relationship that the county has had with Gray Sable has been successful, has worked well for both sides over the past thirteen years. There are two current contract agreements with Gray Sable. One's called the Forest and Recreational Management Agreement and the other one is the Forest Management Agreement, which details the bylaw enforcement aspect of the contract. The agreements are currently set to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, and March first, two thousand and nineteen respectively. So in order for the county and Gray Sable to properly plan for the two thousand and nineteen budget, it's recommended that these agreements be extended to December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. This will allow further time to update these agreements to reflect the county's needs and interests for managing the county's forests and trails. Also, any recommendations from the soon-to-be-completed recreational trails master plan can also be incorporated into these updated agreements. It will also allow the revised agreements to be brought forward outside of the lame duck period and that's another reason why we're recommending to extend at this stage. The contract agreements will be extended based on the current terms and conditions outlined in the two agreements. The current contract costs for managing the forest, the county trails, and enforcing the bylaws, approximately one hundred and sixty thousand a year. Based on the contract extension exceeding that fifty thousand dollar in value, the extension to the agreements will be approved by the C A O in accordance with the lame duck bylaw. So staff recommend that support be provided to extend the current contract agreements to the end of two thousand and nineteen in accordance with the lame duck bylaw and noting that it would be impractical at this stage to go through a competitive process and therefore recommending that this be a single source procurement at this stage. Be happy to take any questions.
Any questions of Randy? Yes, Counselor Fosbrook?
I guess really just a comment that maybe you wanna avoid bylaws that expire on December of an election year?
Yeah, and this is one, I think, when we initially read it was five-year contract. So yes, noting that we'll look for those dates that we're updating some of those agreements.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Seeing none, call the motion, all in favor, accepting this motion. Motion is carried. Thank you, Randy.
Great, thank you.
Next up is a report from Gray Roots team. That report C A O R C W twenty-five nineteen, regiments of Gray Senataph Project be received and that fifteen thousand dollars be transferred from the Gray Roots Morriston Reserve to cover any project costs which exceed the Veterans Affairs grant of eighteen thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars, in-kind donations, and the two thousand and eighteen budgeted funds. Put that on the floor. Counselor Pringle, Counselor Mackey? Go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. I'm Petal Finesse, manager at Gray Roots, and I brought Stephanie McMullin with me. She's a volunteer coordinator and also the writer of many of the grants that go in. She has a silver tongue when it comes to writing. Yes. So I brought Stephanie along because so many of the good words in our grants come from Stephanie. Originally, we wrote a grant for, that was offered in two thousand and fifteen that would pay a hundred percent of the funding to have, in order for us to have a Senataph that honors the one forty-seventh and the two forty-eighth battalions as well, regiments, as well as the thirty-first regiments. There are lots of little Senataphs all across Gray, but not any that commemorates Gray County as a whole. And we thought it would be best to have it in Morriston because it's our village that represents Gray County. And so this time around, funding came out again, but it wasn't for a hundred percent. This time it was up to fifty percent of the bricks and mortars cost. So we were fortunate in getting the grant. That's a big coup for Stephanie because many, for every grant that gets written, perhaps one out of three or four, and that's really good, gets approved, but it's a lot of work building this relationship and getting the money. Way back in two thousand and fifteen, we formed a partnership with Sanderson Memorial. They've been around a very long time and actually the grandfather, the fellow who owns the business now, actually designed many of the memorials that were built in Gray County in the nineteen twenties. So we've included what the Senataph will look like from the original drawings that were submitted in two thousand and fifteen. We had a report to council at that time. It looks an awful lot like the memorial in Eugenia. So I was waiting for Warden Holiday to say something about that. So we're really excited that we've got this historical authenticity. We are asking for a transfer to reserve, but we're pretty confident that we're going to be receiving a lot of donations. So I just did a little presentation on Tuesday to the Silver Seas Group and the Legion and people came up to me and wanted to donate already. So the example we've used in there is there came up on auction through eBay some medals that belonged to a soldier in the county of Gray and a teeny little article got placed in the local paper and more people came in and gave us money than what the medals actually cost. So we had a surplus. So people are really interested in saving our military history and this year especially with the hundredth anniversary of the end of World War One, we think it's a really wonderful addition to have to our village and we're just hoping everyone else feels the same. And I think we're pretty confident in the end it won't cost us any extra money.
Thanks for that presentation. Great idea.
Stephanie, was there anything you wanted?
Okay, okay.
Sorry. Questions? Counselor Barf.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks for the presentation. I think you've clarified my answers, but I just wanted to confirm. My original thought on reading it was that this was going to be for other veterans who are not recognized in their own area, but I'm not getting that report now. I'm seeing that just because we have the Senataph in On Sound or the Senataph in Eugenia, this is going to be like an umbrella one for everyone. So will there be names put on this one or this will be generalized enough then to encompass basically all the veterans from all wars with members from Gray County?
I don't know if we've gotten as far as writing down every name, but certainly we're going to be adding it on to a stop. We have a virtual tour now that folks can do that comes with a headset, but we also can hook it up to our website. A lot of really good information has been done, like George Arrow, I think you've probably heard from George before, and a former teacher in On Sound, David Alexander, whose father, Bob Alexander, is our longest volunteer. They have a lot of information. So as much information as we can gather, we will be saving it. Whether or not it actually goes on the Senataph, we're not certain yet.
Something that's hard to control, right?
That's right. And one of the things that I've just kind of tossed back and forth with Sanderson is because there will be four faces on it, that we can put plaques just underneath the soldier. You can see there's a little place for that for the emblems of the one forty-seventh, two forty-eighth, and thirty-first, and then perhaps on the back side have the emblem of the Grand Simpco Foresters, which is the descendant of those three.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Somebody else had a question? Counselor Mackey?
No, I think it's a tremendous idea to recognize the fallen soldiers from Gray County. I think in the First World War, we lost three hundred and forty some men, you know, almost every Senataph. in every village and community throughout Gray County has probably, you know, five to 10 names on it of soldiers that died. So, I think it's a tremendous opportunity. It's a perfect spot to recognize everyone from Gray. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Bell. And where would we make donations?
Well, I'm pretty sure the finance department will be setting up a specific fund for that, so if people donate money, we can make sure it exactly goes to the Senataph.
Thank you for that. Counselor Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Pedal, Stephanie, great presentation. Thank you for that. I think I echo everything that's been said here. The question I had was, are you going to make other presentations around the county, or is the ward going to get out there and say, for instance, Durham Legion wishes to donate some money to this worthwhile project? Are they going to know about it, I guess is my...
Yes, well, once this gets passed here and then passed at the council meeting, then we will be doing a public campaign, letting folks know about the project, letting them know how they can donate and make a difference, even if it's just information that hasn't been collected yet, because we want to collect as many stories as possible. But yes, we're just waiting for everything formal to go through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Ardell, and then Counselor Fosbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. That's where I was just going to go. Are you going to be addressing an email to all the legions in Gray County?
Yes.
Because I think that's really, really important.
It is important, and we have really good liaisons with the legion too, so, and they're very, very supportive.
I know that the legion we have in Clarksburg, we used to have a museum in Clarksburg, and so it, you know, the Military Museum, which got moved to Gray Roots. So, I'm just hoping that somebody would contact them, because I know they would be very supportive.
We will. We're really good at beating the bushes for potential income.
Thank you for that. Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much, ladies. I kind of got stuck on your first comments about how this lady is a volunteer?
Which lady? Oh, no, she's the volunteer coordinator.
Ah.
So, she works with the volunteers. She's also in interpretation.
Okay.
And she just got into the role of grant writing, so you need to have a strong background in programming, because that's why we look for the money that we look for.
Mm-hmm.
And Stephanie's a very good writer, so that comes in handy as well.
Well, volunteer or not, and I just, you know, I'm glad we clarified that, grant writers would be tremendously valuable, would they not?
Yes, of course.
Yes, exponentially pay for themselves, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
So, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I was asking Kevin Webler this morning about the new exemption that the provinces have promised to legions, which will make them tax exempt if they apply, for property taxes, that is. So, perhaps they can redirect their funds, if you ask them, or just knowing that, I'm not sure, I see Counselor Echols is jumping up and down. Counselor Web, Kevin, do you want to speak first, and then Kevin?
I do. It'd be the first time I ever got to speak before Kevin.
On his last day.
We actually already have bylaw here that permits that, so it, and it, so the legion just have to meet their criteria and make the application, and they will, those taxes will be waived, so on the property for the actual legion halls, so...
Right, and the lower tier, though, has to also, it's all part of, there you are, so maybe, maybe you'll know that, that's a...
I'll send that out.
Another thing, and now Kevin Echols, you can have the last word on that particular aspect.
Well, thank you. The Durham Legion, we made that application for the Durham Legion, and I don't know, it was 10, 12 years ago, that they haven't paid. There was one other legion that was in West Gray, Markville Legion, before it closed its doors. They were exempt. But I guess the bigger thing that comes to me when that came out, what a wonderful thing for the province to say, "We're putting a bylaw in so the municipalities can't collect taxes." Was there anything from the province that was coming to offset that in our OMP funding at any way?
So, you'll monitor that this year?
Well, I've already talked to Matt Wilson at AMO, and he had the same thing, fat chance.
Fat chance. Okay, there, one other comment. I ran into this in the version, what is different between a war memorial and a Senataph? So, a Senataph only exists as a Senataph if you have the names of the deceased. So, if you want to call it a Senataph, you need to have names of the deceased on it, so...
Right.
Otherwise, it's a war memorial.
Right, and that's the name of the funding, so we sort of used war memorial, a Senataph, sort of interchangeably, but you're correct. Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, I got my fingers wrapped on that one, so anyhow.
No, thank you.
You live and learn. Any other comments on that? Okay, all in favor of that motion? Thank you very much. That motion is carried.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you much for coming.
And just on a final word, I'd just like to say thank you to all the counselors that we've worked with these past years, especially the ones that are leaving. It's been a joy. Thank you for serving your communities, and I wish you all everything you're doing. And thank you again. Always come into Gray Roots. You've always got a friend there. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, where are we going? We're in the beginning, so... Okay, yes. So, we're going to go through the consent agenda items. Counselor Fosbrook requested that we, that she has questions relating to each one of them. So, put on the, on the first one, that the Tourism Advisory Committee minutes stated November 1, 2018, be adopted as presented, and that the following recommendations contained therein be endorsed, that report CAOR TAC 2318 be received, and that the priorities for 2019 under the Tourism Destination Development Action Plan be supported, and that report CAOR TAC 2418 regarding revised terms of reference for the Tourism Advisory Committee be received, and that the revised terms of reference for the Tourism Advisory Committee as attached to report CAOR TAC 2418 be endorsed. Put that on the floor. Counselor Compass, Counselor Ardell, Counselor Fosbrook, it's on the floor now. Did you have some, you said you had some questions? Oh, oh, sorry. You're, you're...
Sorry, Mr. Warden.
You're the A in the, in the...
Yes.
Okay.
I had some questions on that. That's regarding the tourism tax. I noticed there was a little brief on that, and I know that the county and regions don't have any input into that, but I'm just wondering, I know in Huntsville, they did, they're in the process of implementing a tourism tax, and with that tourism tax, it is, it's the MAT, and Mr. Plumstead talked about that a little bit, and Mr. Sergorts talked about the importance of having a solid business plan prior to implementing that. You know, I look at Blue Mountain Resorts, and I think that, you know, there's a lot of tourists that are using that, with over 2.5 million visitors every year, and I'm just thinking that this would be probably a good thing for the Blue Mountains to have the municipal accommodation tax, because in Huntsville, it's going to generate $750,000 a year, and 4%, and 30% of that would go to the town in Huntsville. This is just the example. And so, I'm thinking here, because I know that the, you know, I said on the attainable housing, for a few more days anyways, and I'm trying to get as much in as possible. So, with the attainable housing in Blue Mountain Resorts, looking at an opportunity to construct a rental unit that will accommodate workers for Blue Mountain Resorts, I was thinking with this tourism tax, that would go a long way towards this attainable housing project. The town would be looking at possibly securing a piece of property for them, and there was a lot of discussion during the election on this, and the Blue Mountain had wanted to do the Whistler model, which back in 1997, cost $19 million for the town of Whistler. So, in today's dollars, how much is it going to cost the town of the Blue Mountains? So, thinking about this, I know there wasn't much mention there, but they also, sitting at Blue Mountains Council, we haven't, we've had very, very brief discussions on this. So, I'm thinking that maybe tourism should go back at and look at this again, because this is a money that could be generated towards the town of the Blue Mountains, and in being this is the tourism committee, maybe they should be revisiting that as well.
Thanks for those comments. CAO, do you have a...
A couple of considerations, and certainly, I think this will be a topic that does get revisited as the product matures. It's my understanding that we would need a broad destination marketing organization to be able to accept the funds, so it would need to be something that was arm's length from any individual municipality. I also believe that Blue Mountain Resort is charging their own DMF.
Yep.
And you can't have both. So, it would need to be, my understanding is that you would need, Blue Mountain would need to step away from the one that they have, and to participate in a more regional thing. And really, the purpose of the funds that were collected were meant to go back into marketing and promotion of the region itself. It asks a question, TOO has some Q and A on their site, and it asks about can the funds collected as part of a MAT be channeled, for example, into an economic development corporation, which might enable what you're talking about? And it says, "To be eligible to receive MAT revenue, a tourism entity must be a not-for-profit organization whose mandate includes tourism promotion." So, I'm thinking that we're fairly restricted in how those funds can be directed. It's really meant to stay within that tourism envelope, and I, and I think your idea of, okay, accommodation for tourism workers, is that, does, could that fall under that definition? I think we'd need to look into that a little bit further.
Well, they need the workers to keep that place going, so, you know, any funds that they could generate to, to put towards that would be greatly appreciated. 10% would now, and fall back, I think that should look at it in the future.
Well, thanks for that brief. On the terms of reference, would this go forward? I'm going to wait. No, okay. Counselor, Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you. So, I guess I, first thing I have to mention is the minutes doesn't actually state the date, it just says November. Are those meetings held in this room or a different room?
They're held in the, the Heritage Room or the Summit Room normally.
Again, you know, my view is that if it's going to be held in this building, use this wonderful room and perhaps video record. Somewhere in, in either the minutes, somewhere I saw a reference to measurement metrics. So, have we figured out a way to measure our progress in these initiatives?
So, if I refer to the minutes as drafted, Mr. Plumstead talked about jobs in the tourism industry, and that 14% of Gray County jobs are in tourism, visitation, where we're at as far as occupancy rates within the hotels, all of those things are metrics that we look at and try to view trends over time. And we also have been investing in some data from Inveronics that has helped us to try and refine our marketing and promotion, so we know how products align with different consumers, and are doing our best to make sure that when we do do advertising and marketing, Facebook postings and that, that we're targeting those investments to the places where they're most likely to get traction.
Okay, well, I, it just jumped off the page that if we figured out how to wait, you know, how to measure this, then I look forward to seeing what the reports look like in the future. So, the change to the terms of reference, I guess, there's a couple of things going on. One, am I correct in assuming that this is not the only committee that we're looking for new committee members? It all happens with this election cycle? I'm not quite sure how we're getting the message out, that that's the case, and what the deadline is, and what the process is. I did note, I'm looking at a couple of documents here, and I'm not sure which one has which, committee report terms of reference. Yeah, so Schedule A to revised terms of reference, it's an application form to become a committee member, and is that something that people complete, and is that public information? Is that private information? I haven't seen as much detail to make an application for a committee in the past.
Heather will comment on that.
So, we have an ad out right now for public members for three committees, the Tourism Advisory Committee, the Economic Development and Planning Advisory Committee, and the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. We have members on there that serve for the term, if they are able to do that, and they submit resumes, applications to, right now, they're going to our communications manager, Mr. Hatton. He is collecting all of those, and a report will be brought forward in January to council with recommendations for members for those committees from the public. As far as membership from around the horseshoe here, those are appointed annually.
Thank you for that. So, where is that advertised?
That, it was advertised in the paper, it's advertised on our county website, through social media.
And the deadline is?
Deadline right now is November 30, but we're looking to extend it, hopefully, to get some more applications to the middle of December.
Okay.
Okay, that's an update. Okay, so, I don't see any other questions. We'll call the motion. All in favor? That motion is carried. The next is, report TR CW 318 regarding the acquisition of road widening be received, and that the property identified as Part Lot 26, Concession 14, Keppel being Part 1, Plan 16R-11118, Geographic Township of Keppel, Township of Georgian Bluffs, County of Gray, be required, be acquired by the Corporation of the County of Gray for road widening purposes, and that staff be directed to proceed with the road acquisition prior to county council approval as per Section 25.6B of the procedural bylaw, in order to allow for a timely closure of the real estate transaction pending on the abutting land. Put that on the floor. Counselor Greenfield, Counselor Burley, motion for action. Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So, I'm just going to comment, there are two reports that are very similar, and I had similar questions. So, relevant consultation, and I believe I'm looking at the first report, states internal planning department, external, I would imagine, the landowners, and in comparison, well, one of the questions that came to mind was, you know, is our own lawyer reviewing this? And then the other report doesn't have any reference to internal consultation, so I'm wondering who, who was the relevant consultation with internally, and if not the planning department, then, then who? Those are my questions.
So, I can advise that certainly, all reports that come forward are discussed at senior management before they, before the agenda's actually released, and that's at least one opportunity, as well, individual departments on their own initiative will also seek out their colleagues for information, advice, guidance, and I, of course, see all of the reports. So, hopefully, there has been internal consultation that is appropriate to each matter that comes before council. In this particular instance, I know that these reports are sometimes not easy to understand, and in this particular case, when I asked for the Coles Notes version, for those of you who are old like me and remember Coles, the Coles Notes version is that this was a farm, and there was a lot severed off the farm, and now the parent is selling the farm to a third party, but the, but the lot that they had is going to the son, and he wanted to enlarge that lot of his before the final sale of the original farm. And so, all we're trying to do is to facilitate that change, because as noted in the report, once these things are severed, they don't merge again, unless there's a further change. So, our one foot enables them to be able to do this. And these are the kind of things that I hope, as the county, if we've looked carefully, it's not impacting us at all in a negative way, and it helps them to do, to do something that they want to do with their own property. So, I'm hoping that we can support these things and just move them forward.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Echols?
Well, thank you, and I'm glad that the other...
Well, thank you, and I'm glad that the other member pulled this, because my question's very pertinent. And in the transportation master plan, this will certainly expand County Road 17 wide enough that we can get that traffic to County Road 1 and get it used for what it, you know, has been expanded to for these many years. Pat?
I think it's your last meeting.
Hi, Wayne. Give me the bat.
We got a bat over here.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Any other questions, comments? I seeing none. All in favor of this motion? That motion is carried. We move on to C, which is the road widening acquisition plan. That report TRC W 2218 regarding the acquisition of road widening be received, and that property identified as Part Lot 21, Concession 1, north of the Durham Road, Artemisia being Part 6, Plan 17R 634, Geographic Township of Artemisia, Municipality of Gray Highlands, County Gray be acquired by the Corporation of the County Gray for road widening purposes, and that staff be directed to proceed with the road acquisition prior to county council approval as per Section 25.6B of the procedural bylaw in order to allow for a timely closure of the real estate transaction pending on the abutting land. Put that up on the floor, please. Counselor Wright, Counselor Bell, and any comments from Counselor Fosbrook, who has to have this pulled.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So...
We answered it?
Pardon me?
You have comments, or did we answer it in the first round?
I think this is the first time we're talking about this.
Oh, I thought maybe it was similar. Okay, go ahead.
We are talking about TRC W 4718?
No, 22.
2218.
Okay, I apologize. I've got the met of order.
No comments?
So, we're talking about the affordable housing?
No, road widening application.
Oh!
C.
I have no questions on that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, all in favor of that motion? That motion is carried. So, the next one is the capital procurement, that report TRC W 4718 be received, and that staff be authorized to issue the tender for Gray Road 40 pulverized and paved construction project prior to the 2019 budget approval due to tender constraints in accordance with Section 3.3C of the purchasing procedure, which allows the procurement of up to 50% of gross expenditures in year one of 10-year capital forecast in Section 10.0, 10.1F of the purchasing procedure stating that items requiring pre-budget approval must be reported to council in order to have the expenditure authorized via resolution. Put that on the floor. Counselor Pringle, Counselor Barfoot, any questions from council on that? Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So, this item being, you know, particularly pricey item, is this something that if we were referred to the asset management plan, has been prioritized, and that's why we're, like, was this on the capital budget?
Counselor, oh, okay. Patrick?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, this was in the 10-year capital that came through in May. It's, yeah, it's a very large job, and our thinking is just that it is going to take a lot of a contractor's forces. This will be their big job for the summer, and we just want to get it out sooner rather than later. So, you know, because of delays with the budget or, and those things, we just want to maybe tender it early. So, it's basically what we had proposed in May in the 10-year capital.
So, if I may, if it was brought forward in May, was it, and I guess to back up and to be clear, sometimes you'll have a capital budget, and it's approved, and that's one year, and then you have a projected five or 10. So, I'm just wondering why we need to kind of approve this again if we've already approved it?
Yes, Kevin. Kevin insists. Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
The way the county's been doing this is we do it, up until this year, we've always had a five-year forecast. And this year, we moved to a 10-year forecast. It's just a forecast. You're not permitted to pass a budget for more than, I think it's three years, and there's got a qualifier in there, but a term of counsel as well. I'd have to. So, what we're doing here is, these are placed into that 10-year capital we did. This was a job that was in the first year of that 10-year capital forecast, but that doesn't approve it. It's just a planning document, the forecast. From there, then, what we ask of, when we pass the forecast, that those jobs in the first year be placed in the first, placed in the annual budget for council's consideration. At still at that point, then until the annual budget's approved, those capital projects still are not approved. So, this way, what Pat's trying to comment is here, it's such a large job, wants to get it out because of the forces, et cetera. He's asking, since the annual budget with the capital project hasn't been approved, he's asking for pre-budget approval.
And I appreciate the clarification on that. And part of the reason that I'm asking is because if the previous approval, if you will, was more conceptual or in principle, does that mean that aside from this project, that other capital projects will receive, you know, different reporting, a different approval process? Like, has there been a report? In previous budgets, we've gotten pretty extensive reports that say, you know what, this is why this is an expense. Here's the rationale for it. Is there a document that supports that, aside from anecdotally knowing it needs to get done?
No, the annual budget will bring, Pat will bring forward all, and there'd be a list of... All the jobs that he's planning to do in the 2019 year, 2019 year. And those would be listed by project and by the amounts and how they're going to be funded. And that's, those are similar to what is in the 10-year forecast, but they're just updated with new costs as best we can. But it's still an approval process. It, nothing's approved, and all that annual budget's approved.
Thank you.
And then those would, they would come back if they're significant, if they're more than $250,000, even if the capital budgets, or the annual budgets approved, projects more than $250,000 will still come back here to be awarded by council.
Thank you very much.
John?
Real quickly, Pat, if I can, this is your number one project for next year. You want to get it out in a timely fashion. It is a big project going 15 kilometers. I fully support it. I think you're doing the right thing. This road's had to be done for 10 years. Enough.
Thank you. To that? Counselor Mackey?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Warden. Pat, absolutely, this road needs to be done. I think it's the worst road that we have in the entire county. I drive it on a regular basis, and it's, you know, it's actually getting unsafe, so I certainly support this moving forward quickly.
Thank you for that. Kevin, Kevin, Kevin.
Follow-up to, as is the amount of this, it will come back to council again then to award. So, the new council will have another, another look at it, and wherever this comes in, and there'll be discussion at that time as well again.
So, it allows the paperwork to get out there, so, right. Yes. Counselor Pringle, did you have any?
Just curious, if there was extra money in the budget, how far west could this go?
I was thinking of that. We never got that approved, did we?
From Desborough to the county line?
Okay. Last shot there. Okay, let's, let's go on that. All in favor of this motion? That motion is carried. Okay, that, next is E, if I'm right. That report HDR C W 2218 regarding funding for affordable housing in West Gray be received, and that warden and clerk, that the warden and clerk be authorized to enter into a contribution agreement with 1993934 Ontario Incorporated, Kevin and Jason Trumbull, for the funds available in 2018 and 2019 through the investment in affordable housing program, program rental build program. Put that on the floor. Counselor Barfoot, Counselor Echols, discussion on that?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. So, we've certainly discussed this. I believe that this is the first time we actually see the agreement. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, top of the second page, it has a definition for affordable housing, which I'm, it, that does, how many definitions of affordable housing are out there?
There are many. This is actually because it's provincial funds. This is actually a provincial document, so it would be their definition of affordable housing. And this is the contribution agreement that we have to use for these funds. So, that would be the province's definition.
Well, I just think that it's noteworthy, that if there are numerous definitions of affordable housing, that that might be something that, you know, we want to sort of come to some consensus on. So, just reading this out loud, affordable housing means housing which is modest in terms of floor area and amenities based on household needs and community norms, in projects that achieve rent levels in accordance with the program guidelines. On a stop right there, what program guidelines are they referring to?
So, the program is the rental build program, and there is a link in this document to the program guidelines, and it's in Appendix A.
Right. And then they also make mention to Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation Average Market Rent Survey. Is that something that we use as a tool?
It is. So, each year, CMHC gives us what they consider our average market rent, and this program funds, the rents would have to be 80% of market rent. So, for instance, Gray County's average market rent for a one-bedroom, according to CMHC, is $724. Therefore, rents would have to be $577. So, that's what helps us set the rents.
Okay. Because it wasn't clear whether or not CMHC's market rent survey covers all of the province. So, we are getting data from this area?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And then last question, because the report's relevant consultation, no indication, so I'm going to assume that our in-house legal has reviewed this?
Yes, it's actually a contribution agreement we've been using since 2014, because it is a provincial agreement, but it did, it was actually reviewed by outside legal at the time. But yes, Michael did have a look at it, too, so.
Well, I'm sure the province does a lot of things right, but not necessarily everything. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? All the motion, all in favor? Motion is passed. Okay, I guess we're down now. We've done all of that. Number seven, we're, other business that we need to deal with? Counselor Pringle?
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. In light of the fact that we, the delegation that we had this morning, very positive vibe coming from that, I would only suggest that maybe the ladies from Gray Roots, I believe, have left, but maybe next year, that could be the feature of the county visit to Gray Roots, just the project that's proposed. And it would be an opportunity to, it would have been nice if they could have stayed for lunch. However, we couldn't accommodate them, but it would be a time when maybe the donator, the donor and his spouse could be there, and the people that have worked hard and long on the project.
That's a very good suggestion. Thanks for that. Any other comments for under other business? Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to touch on the survey that was sent out to council members relating to their feedback on the committee structure. I chose not to reply to it because I really think that this is a conversation that needs to take place as a group. I'm not going to be participating in the discussion, but I just did want to make the point that, you know, regardless of structure, I hope that the meetings are increasingly video recorded. And, yeah, that's my hope. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments under other business? Seeing none, we can move on to notice motions. Any notice of motions? Forward passes, nothing? Okay, we'll close that off. And now, we're into nine, which is special presentations. So, we can commence that. The, okay, Heather and I will take to the podium.
Yes.
Okay. This is the 2018 final council recognition that we're going to proceed with right now. The first to receive a bronze recognition medal is John Bell, who's been with us for eight years, County Councilor since 2011, 2016, Chair of the Transportation and Public Safety Committee, first became a municipal councillor in 2006. Memberships include 2013, 2015, Vice Chair of Social Services Committee, 2015, Vice Chair of Transportation and Public Safety Committees, Member of the Development Charges Committee, Member of Knox United Church and Durham Masonic Lodge. John and his wife, Leanne, have three children, fifth-generation Glenell farmers, and owner of Bell Grove Farms, cash crops, and cow calf operation. Where is John? John?
Mr. Warden.
Thank you, sir. It's an honor to present you that. Next to the camera there. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Next bronze medal goes to, for four years of service, is Anne Marie Fosbrook, Gray County Councillor since 2015, became Mayor of Southgate in 2015, real estate agent at Royal LePage, recipient of the President's Gold Award, Member of the Township of Southgate's Police Services Board. Anne Marie and her husband, James, have two sons. Anne Marie?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next is, John has left, but I'll read, I'll read the notes on John McKean. He's a Gray County Councillor since 2015, first became a municipal councillor in 2004, Member of stewardship Gray Bruce. John and his wife, Lena, have four children. They raise grass-fed Black Angus cattle on the farm, and he's the manager of a large construction company in Ontario. John is, can't be with us this afternoon, so we'll pass that on. Should we take a picture? Gosh.
Mr. Warden, I'm going to butt in here at this point to do our next recipient of four years is Stuart Halliday. After four years of service, Stuart became a Gray County Councillor in 2015. Obviously, in 2018 was the warden of Gray County. Stuart was first elected in 2005 as a councillor in Gray Highlands, and was a member of the Board of Health for three terms in 2015, 16, and 2018. And Stuart is a resident of Eugenia with his wife of 34 years, Patricia, and they have six children. Stuart is a retired professional industrial engineer and a senior industrial manager, and is also co-owner of Eugenia Falls Airport. Congratulations, Stuart.
Thanks, Alan. Thank you. Thank you. Much appreciated. Well, I received that probably. Thank you. The next one is, we're raising up a notch here, is Silver. And the next presentation is to Gail Ardell, who is 11 total years and is ready to receive her Silver Medal. First became a Gray County Councillor in 2004, and then returned in 2014. Over 17 years' experience on the Town and Blue Mountains Council. Memberships include the Director of Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Vice Chair of the Small Urban Municipalities, Chair of the Nottawa Saga Valley Conservation Authority, Agricultural Advisory and Efficiency Audit Member. Gail and her husband, Shane, have four grown children, and they are proud apple orchard owners. And she is, was, or still is, I guess, registered, entire, early childhood educated and resource teacher, recently retired, owning and operating two childcare centers since 1987. Gail? Please present you with your Silver Medal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Audit Member. Gail and her husband Shane have four grown children, and they are proud apple orchard owners. And she is, was, or still is, I guess, registered entire early childhood, educated, and resource teacher, recently retired, owning and operating two childcare centers since 1987. Gail? Please present you with your silver medal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of medals today. Alan Barfoot, fourteen years, a silver medal, Gray County Councillor since 2004, 2016, '17, Gray County Warden, represented Gray County at the Intelligent Communities Forum Global Summit held in New York, my favorite cities, to receive recognition as one of the world's top seven intelligent communities in 2007. Entered municipal government as a child councillor for the Derby Township in 1991, and was elected Mayor of Georgian Bluffs in the fall of 2006. Memberships include 2017 Owen Sound Community Advisory Committee for Georgian College, Gray County Building Task Force, 2011, '12, '14, '15 Chair of the Transportation and Public Safety Committee, and 2011 and '13 Vice Chair of Planning and Community Development Committee, 2011 Vice Chair of Planning and Community Development Committee. He retired from Parma Lot, Canada. Alan and his wife Karen have four children. Please to present this to you, Alan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You got it? Okay, there we are.
Thank you.
Next is Kevin Echols, eighteen years of service, for silver. Gray County Councillor since 2001, served three terms as Gray County's Wardens, as 2008, '09, and '15. Mayor of the West Gray for the past twelve years, first elected in 2000. Memberships include West Gray Police Services Board, West Gray Economic Development Committee, Zone Five Director of the Ontario Association of Police Services Board, Director of the Northern Credit Union Board, Director of Soggin Conservation Authority, Chartered Member of West Gray Durham Lions Club, worked in agriculture and partnered with his father in a dairy farming operation. Kevin and his wife Joanne reside in Newstadt, Normandy area, and have two lovely children. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Kevin Echols would love to have permission to use the microphone.
Granted, sir. Thank you very much.
It'll be the best, be the best sleep that you'll ever have, Boddy. Go ahead. Just
one correction. I don't believe I've been here for eighteen years. I've been at the county since 2003, and not that I'm much of a budget person or a numbers person, but that was only fifteen years that I've been at the county. So, I think it still qualifies me for a silver, so that's fine. Still get the silver. I've had the great opportunity, and I was going to speak at the end of council, but I thank you very much for reserving the right to have me speak now to the exemplary people that I've worked with in governance throughout the fifteen years that I've been here. It's been a great privilege, but more so the great friends and professionalism work that we have done with the staff, and I can't say enough about that. I've had a number of CEOs. You're the last one that I'm going to be working with, Kim, so you're the best. Go ahead with that. Gary Wood, Norm Gamble, they're not in the back, so who, yeah, nobody will tell. Oh, this is recorded. They'll hear it. Damn it, anyways. A lot of the staff, as I said, certainly going to miss that, certainly going to miss the accomplishments. Looking forward to more accomplishments from the county, but I regret not a day coming to the county and moving what I believe forward is a great, great county and great programs that we have here. I'm going to miss Mike Elgar paying me off for every bet that my Islanders beat his Philadelphia Flyers. You're in purchasing, you've got that, don't you, Mike? Thank you. I'm up. So, you will see me, because I will be around. The schedule will continue on, and Mike's agreed to go with that, so I will be here periodically collecting my funds. Thank you, Mike. In finishing, I got to say to the new council coming in, I hope that you show up at the door every day when you come to council, wearing your Gray County pin, wearing that you're here to represent the county. My one regret is that over the last couple of years, that may have wavered slightly, but it's something that if this county is going to continue forward and continue on a strong path, that we've got to do what is right for the county, and not what subjectively is right for each one of our municipalities, but as a county at large, because we're in this as a community, and we need to respect that. Or civil disobedience is not acceptable. And I hope that the new council that's coming in will be very good at making that into a team and moving together forward. Doesn't mean that we'll have different ideas, but when the decision is made, fall behind it and move it forward. It can change down the road, but you can't stand and keep throwing stones at it as a team. The last thing I'm going to leave you with, and I repeated this when I left my last council meeting in West Gray on Monday, this one's slightly different. John, Bob, and Al, thank you very much for being there, was Mother Teresa's a way, anyway poem. People are often unreasonable, illogical, and self-centered. Forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you are successful, you will win some false friends and some true enemies. Succeed anyways. If you are honest and frank, people may cheat you. Be honest and frank anyway. What you spend years building, someone could destroy overnight. Build anyway. If you find serenity and happiness, they may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today, people will often forget tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may never be enough. Give the world the best you've got anyway. You see, in the final analysis, it is between you and your God. It is never between you and them anyway. Thank you very much. It's been a privilege.
Thank you, Kevin. Next up is Harley Greenfield for a silver award, Gray County Councillor since, for 2004, 2007, then 2011 to '18, first elected to St. Vincent Council in 1997. Memberships include 2017 Gray County Federation of Agriculture, alternate member, 2013 to '16, Vice Chair of the Corporate Services Committee, Gray County Building Task Force, Space Needs Task Force, Museum and Library Boards, Gray Sable Conservation Authority, Inter-Municipal Wind Turbine Committee, Gray County Forest Stewardship, Inter-Township Fire Department Board, participated in International Plowing Match and activities in 1987 and 2004 as a member of the Antiques Committee, actively involved in Meaford Community Theatre as an actor, and has written several plays that have been staged at Meaford Hall. Harley and his wife Doris have been married for forty-six years and have three children. He's self-employed in masonry construction since 1976. Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Okay. Next is Bob Pringle, nineteen years of service to Gray County. Gray County Councillor since 2000, 2006, 2007, Gray County Warden. First became a municipal councillor in 1994, Member of Gray County Building Task Force, Chair of the Board of Health, 2016, Vice Chair of Transportation and Public Safety Committee, 2013 to 2015, Chair of Corporate Services Committee, 2011, Vice Chair of Finance and Personnel Committee, Dairy Farmer, retired in 2010, but is still working, still living on the family farm. Bob and Jody will soon be married forty-five years and have four lovely children. Okay, thank you.
Everybody has an opportunity, so I just thought I'd take an opportunity to thank everyone for all the time that I've been here and all the good times I had, and actually had a time to see some of the families grow up. We don't see that as much now because we aren't in those subcommittees, which I think is very important we return to. But I always looked at this, first of all, eight years ago, I'd known that this day was coming. So, this has been in a plan, so, I mean, it's not a big surprise. I knew eight years ago that this day was coming. But I look at it a bit like 4H, my days in 4H. It was, the 4H motto was learn to do by doing. So, at the time, we were a council that did not have computers. I mean, that was, you don't know it now, but that was a big debate at the time, where are we staying hard copy? Are we going to go to the computers? And Jody, it's not bad now, but I can tell you, for Ernie, I was at Ernie's door all the time, because, you know, for me to learn a computer, but it was an opportunity. So, I looked on it as an opportunity to learn and continue my education. You learned about planning, all those things that happen out in the countryside, and I had a lot of good teachers along the way, and transportation as well, with roads, bridges, and all the things that go on. One of the biggest things that happened in my early days I was part of was the no smoking bylaw that we put in for Gray County. And you think, well, that's no big deal, but boy, it was controversial. I can tell you, there was unhappy councillors, they, no way we're going to do that, but anyway, we did. And we were one of the first, if not the first, in Ontario, I think, to do that. We can check the record sometimes, but I'm pretty sure I'm accurate in saying that. So, anyway, just want to continue Gray County, stay proud and stay true, and keep up the good work that you are doing. I mean, it just continues to get better. So, look forward to retirement. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, Bob. Next up is Arlene Wright, who's got twelve years and a silver medal coming. Gray County Councillor since 2007, 2010 and '11, Gray County Warden, Member of the Board of Health, 2017, 2012, 2015, Chair of Planning and Community Development Committee, entered municipal government as a councillor for the City of Owen Sound in 2003. Prior to entering politics, Arlene was involved in the leadership roles with a number of community organizations, including the Chair of Georgian College Campus, Community Resource Team, Chair of Owen Sound Police Services Board, President of the Ontario Public School Trustees Association, President of the Ontario Public School Boards Association, trustee and chairperson of the Gray County Board of Education, and Commissioner of the Education Improvement Commission. Arlene is a chartered member of the Zenata Club of Owen Sound and area. She loves to travel, read, play hockey, oh, play bridge, and is a charter supporter of the Owen Sound Attack Major Junior A Hockey Team. Arlene has three children. Thank you. And four great grandchildren. And still a member of the Board of Health, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boddy.
Sure. So, I'm the last one at the mic. You know what that means. I want to say thank you, too. I have, I've really enjoyed my years up here at the county. The staff up here has always been incredible. Always said we had the best finance manager that anybody had in any of the municipalities, and I dared anybody to try and steal them away, because there was no way you would be able to do that. But I think probably the greatest thing I'm taking away from my days at county council are the friends I've made, friends I have made that I've made for life, and they are very much appreciated. I wanted to say something that Kevin said, and I think it's important enough that I can say it again. When I came up to the county, I thought it was in 2004, but I could be wrong about that. One of the experienced councillors up here and I had chat together, and the one thing he said to me is, when you come up to the county, you leave your municipal hat at home, and you put your county hat on, and the decisions that you make up here are made for the best of the county, the best decisions you can make that affect the entire county, that you no longer are your municipal person, but you are the county person. And I've always remembered that, and I've always tried to make decisions for the best of the county. I know sometimes it hasn't been popular when I've gone home or back to council, and there was even a time when our council thought perhaps we should even get out of the county, because they weren't very happy. But on the other hand, and it was pointed out to me on Monday night as I retired from city council, that probably it was because I was up here and able to be up here and be warden, that we brought the city and the county closer together, and the city started to understand what the county was all about and why decisions were made up here that affected the county, that sometimes had an adverse effect on the city. So, I just say to all of you that are going to be back, you must make decisions for the best of the county. And remember that when you do that, you're affecting everybody in the county, and we all have to support each other. I know that some municipalities pay more taxes than others, they pay more into the county than others, but everybody has the same needs, and those that have not need our help. So, I don't for one minute begrudge paying the amount that the city pays into the county, because we're supporting the county. We're not supporting just us. So, I wish you all the best. I think you'll have a great council, and I know that those of you who are remaining will help those who are coming in and help them see the light, so to speak, and I hope you'll enjoy it as much as I've enjoyed it the last number of years. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for those kind words. I'll retire back to the head there, as I want to face out rather than in. All right. If you don't mind, I'll sit down. We haven't got the DS in place yet. I was promised that someday that would happen, but anyhow, I will.
I will. So, my address is as, being elected in 2018 from this division, to thank the wardens, did a smart turn of vision, teach them table objectives. I return thousand from my very exciting, rewarding thirty-eight career in the fashion industry, I was uncertain how I could continue finding a special purpose in my life. Getting involved with my community, starting a small tourist-oriented business next to Eugenia Falls with my wife Patricia, and getting involved in municipal politics has certainly provided me with fulfillment and a special purpose for my life. The electorate have spoken, and I will now refocus my energies as the newly-elected president of the Gray Highlands Chamber of Commerce. 2018 has been a good year for Gray County. We have settled into our new home, and this was achieved on budget and on time. Many thanks go out to the building committee, staff, and contractor who were able to overcome challenges and work together to build the terrific space we are in today. When I was elected warden, I promised to serve our county, its citizens, with dedication, humility, and integrity. I certainly feel this objective has been met. The role of the warden as defined in the municipal act is ambiguous. It does state that one of It does state that one of the roles is to provide leadership. It doesn't say how to do this, and therefore is open to interpretation. Charing council meetings and acting as a goodwill ambassador is also part of the job. I started this term by meeting individually with each member of council, seeking input and advice. Our CEO, Kim Wingrove, and I also visited each lower-tier council, except I missed unfortunately Owen Sound because I was ill that day, to inform these council members about the services provided by the county. Each municipal presentation was customized by our CEO. I believe this was an effective process to encourage continued collaboration between the county and our lower-tier members. As your warden, I had the pleasure of attending the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference in Halifax, the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative in Ajax, and several meetings of Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. At the AOMO Conference in Ottawa, I was pleased to lead three delegations to the newly-elected provincial government. As warden, I have also attended senior management team meetings and provided input. As well, I sat on the following boards: Gray Bruce Public Health, Long-term Care Management Committee, Economic Development Committee, the CAO Performance Evaluation Committee, and the Town of Blue Mountains Task Force. Acting as a goodwill ambassador at many local function was an important and enjoyable part of the job. Staying at the function after my speech was always appreciated by the organizers. The county is blessed to have a hard-working, resilient, intelligent, forward-thinking Chief Administrative Officer. It has been a pleasure to work with Kim Wingrove as she has strived to improve our organization and the services we provide. Her initiatives, with council approval, of course, have followed the three pillars of our strategic plan: growing the economy, supporting healthy and connected communities, and providing excellence in governance and service. We should be very proud of what has been accomplished this year. The list is long, but a few highlights are the completion of this beautiful and functional new building, finalizing the official plan, acquiring the former Sidneyham School Site for future development of skills training, trades, and innovation, community hub, hiring new and competent staff to round out our ability to provide excellence in service, and addressing the changing requirements of long-term care by hiring CNA Living to provide management services to our three long-term care facilities. It is good to say the newly-elected council can start their new jobs with an organization that is future-ready. To all the new council, I have, to the new council, I have one recommendation to enhance governance and give you more opportunities to share input. Consider establishing four distinct committee chairs to assist with the committee, the whole meeting, and support the warden in a leadership role. I also recommend considering changing the term of warden to two years. This would provide more Gray County input in the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Initiative, and the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. I now want to take this opportunity, thank our very professional staff for their help this year, and a special thank to Penny Colton, our very capable and understanding executive assistant. She managed her role with grace and diplomacy. Also, I want to thank this council for their input and guidance. Together, we've made Gray County a better place to live, work, and play. The very best to my fellow councillors, as some retire with honor, some seek new opportunities, and others return to this chamber to provide the leadership and mentoring for a new team of councillors. Again, thank you. It has been a very special year for me. Respectfully submitted. Thank you very much.
Motion to Dr. Eckles.
Oh, motion, Council Echols?
Anything before the Chair? We're going back to more formality. The Chair? Anything before the Chair?
No.
I'd like to introduce, move the motion that the warden's closing address be adopted as presented and goes to the members.
Thanks. Seconder, Council Pringle. Thank you, thank you for that.
If I may? Can we just fix the little typo before we put that down to history?
Yeah, by versus...
Yeah.
Got it, yeah. I couldn't correct it in progress.
We'll take care of that for you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Call the question?
Call the question? All in favor? Thank you.
So if you want to go to the front?
Oh, okay.
Present your wardens.
Thank you.
Mr. Warden, on behalf of, as past warden, it's my privilege to present you with the warden's pin. Interesting little story that goes along with being a warden. Right close to the end of my term, I was at a function, a Western Ontario Wardens function, and a member from another county said, "How many people are in Gray County?" And I said, "93,000." And the gentleman said, "Just remember, when you look back in your history, you were the big cheese, you were the top dog, you were the spokesperson for 93,000 people for a year." So that's something I remembered from that speech, and I think it's something to be very proud of as a warden, that you get to lead the county, and you've done a great job this past year. So on behalf of past wardens, this is certainly a pin that not everyone gets to wear.
No, I appreciate that. It has the year of...
It does.
Design.
We all have to get our glasses on to be able to read. We're proudly, my friend.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. And... Is there anything else we need to do?
Looking for one more motion to adjourn, Ede.
Ah, look at all the volunteers. Burley and Barfoot, they're BBs. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned, and thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much for working with me over 2018. Same with the council, certainly appreciate it, and it's great. Thank you.